Well, three o'clock, we'd like to call our meeting to order. Uh, you'd like to say a prayer?
Sure.
Please, if y'all would please stand with us.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve our community and our city today. Please give us clear minds and clear voices to make decisions for the city and our community. In your heavenly name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its republic, for which it stands, with all affection, honor, and glory, in the visible, in the routine, and justice for all.
The City of Ch- Chipling welcomes you to this meeting. This is a time set aside for the citizens of Chipling to address the planning and zoning commission. This is none of question and answer period. It is not a political forum, nor is it time for personal accusations and derogatory marks to or about city personnel. If you would like to address the planning and zoning commission, please raise your hand to speak, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to no more than three minutes per Florida statute. Two eight six point zero one one four, to ask a question via phone, dial star nine and wait to be recognized unmuted. If you are attending via webinar, there will be an on-screen option to ask a question during the public comment portion of the meeting. Your participation is welcome and appreciated. Presentation and approval in a minute.
I move we approve the presentation and approve on minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, missed one. Approval of agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I see that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's carry it. Agended items? We have a request for a land use map amendment, twelve thirty-seven Church Avenue, Thomas James Simmons, III.
Hello, I gave you some maps. These are the actually correct maps that I, first ones I did overlooked a couple properties. Applicant Thomas James Simmons, III requests a small-scale amendment per City Ordinance, Chapter forty-four zoning, Article twelve. Amendment approvals for planning and zoning in City Council is a requirement. The location for the small-scale amendment is twelve thirty-seven Church Avenue. The applicant would like to rezone the property from low-density residential to commercial to allow business to be permitted for land use. The property is located at twelve thirty-seven Church Avenue, parcel zero zero thirteen ninety-three dash zero 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 with point one eight seven acreage. Approval of the small-scale future land use map amendment would change the property from low-density residential to commercial. This would allow the constructions of a mechanic shop for the business use, which could generate income, create jobs, stimulate economic growth in the community. The proposed mechanic shop project will not, will be reviewed at a later time. So we're not, he has a proposed what he wants to do, but we're not approving that. All we're doing is approving the small-scale amendment or not approving. Signage was posted on July fifteenth. We provided with public notices of hearings, thirty days requirement. Forty-seven certified letters were mailed out within five hundred feet of the property. Twenty-seven letters were claimed, eight were, was returned. I did have a couple calls. Nobody said that they disagreed or agreed. They were just questioning what was the process, what they were wanting to do. And Mr. Simmons is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. May I ask you a question? Just to be clear, this is only to change the zoning?
This is only to rezone the property from low-density to commercial. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Simmons, would you like to speak on this?
I require the property.
State your name, address.
My name is Thomas James Simmons, III. Address is thirteen oh eight Brick Yard Road. I required the property approximately about three years ago and to do something with it. And recently, it's, she's saying mechanic shop, I was gonna do restoring shop. It has a little bit mechanic gonna be into the restoring, but it wasn't basically a restored shop. It's basically, you know, mechanic shop is basically gonna be like a restored shop. So it's not physically gonna be a all-out right mechanic shop.
Right, so all your, all your mechanic will be done outside of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's basically what I'm doing, you know. Hobby I picked up and something that I wanna go, I have a few properties and that one's, one of the ones I wanna use.
You, you stated that you're putting a thirty by forty building on that property?
Yes.
The forty linked up is gonna be turned to east and west?
Um, yes, uh, north and south. The forty is gonna be north and south.
The long way is gonna be north and south?
Yes.
Okay.
And then thirty is gonna be east and west.
Thirty will be the east and west part?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think you're aware that you're not to probably put a stormwater pond in on that property. Anybody else got any questions?
The big thing to me is that you, you would keep it clean out and around outside because of the residential homes that are up and down there that are pretty neat and clean, most of them. And, um, and which I know you're saying you're gonna just not really do mechanic work, but do the restoring. Um, but that's the big thing to me. But you, you know, wouldn't leave stuff all around the outside and, and things like that. Cause I know how guys are, cause I got one sitting back there. He likes the junk stuff.
Mechanic shops are not noticed for...
For cleaning.
For cleaning, they say. Normally get a bunch of cars stacked up around them and all that sort of stuff. But you're doing all your work inside.
Inside, so basically if I do have any cars that's there, I was gonna make it where it's gonna be in the back of the building and more than in front of the building.
Also, the fire, do you make your fence?
Yes, I was gonna do that, yes. I was gonna do all of that.
Yeah.
All of that's in my, my building plan zone, what's going on, fences, all added into the, uh, the, the budget that I have.
But we're under the impression that if you're gonna be doing work on vehicles in the backyard, we're gonna put up privacy fence.
Uh, not doing work maybe for the, just restoring the vehicles, not doing the work in the back of the vehicle, just to restore the vehicle, be vehicles so they won't be in front, so it was, it won't look like it's missing.
Just putting it back there, not having parks laying there. If so, you would need a good privacy fence to shield them from the homes.
I was gonna do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying that you're gonna put up a privacy fence on each side of your building?
Yes.
And that would be when he comes back with his plans for his building. Since this is just changing the actual land.
Okay. Anybody in the house would like to speak?
I just had one question, what, as a small building, you put a paint shop in, what size is the paint shop in the apartment?
Paint shop can be that big, that big, it can be, uh... With the paint shop, it, uh, it's gonna be just a little smaller area for like a, maybe twelve by twenty-four. Those are the things that I think I do have in my plans on size of everything. It should be in the, in the plans that I, I gave. So I, I do feel like it'll work for that size.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Hello, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Donna Austin and I am right next door to where, um, he's planning to put his restoring shop. And there's something very exclusive, uh, uh, very elegant that I'm planning to put on my property. So I'm very concerned, um, not about what he's doing there, but just what is that going to look like? And I certainly would not want, uh, my guests that will be coming to my, uh, business to see a, a lot of cars that's parked to be restored and all of that. Uh, Chipling, um, really needs something that's a little bit more elegant, in my opinion. Um, I just, I can't imagine a restoring cars on Church Avenue. Um, I don't particularly, I'm not that comfortable with that idea. Um, just because usually when you're restoring cars, uh, that can be an eyesore. So, um, that's just my opinion on that.
Okay, thank you.
Is she the one that has the plans that cleared the lots? She had two lots right next to her. But she came for council already, but so this is not the same one? This may be the same lady, but I do not have anything. I've talked to her, but I have nothing in me. Does she have to do this one there? I'm just trying to see which side she's on.
Is it gonna also be a business though? Some type of business or a home? That's what it sounded like she says.
But I don't know, I don't have plans that it may change, I don't know. You'd have to ask her.
It sounded like it was.
I, I should, I, I want to make the public aware that restoration shop usually done by appointment. It's a long-term deal. It's not like a mechanic changing old, gonna have fifteen cars sitting out there in front of the place. You're gonna have an arrangement for someone to have the vehicle there. You're gonna do your own vehicle, it's gonna go through the whole process and then it's gonna drive off. Not planning on having a bunch of cars stacked out there. I feel like it's, that needs to be cleared.
Well, that's, that's what I'm understanding is that what the work he's gonna be doing is gonna be inside the building.
Right.
And, uh, but I think what everybody else is, is getting at, you're not gonna have fifteen, twenty cars sitting over there waiting to be restored, cause...
Hello?
Based on what you said in your report here, you're not gonna do but two a year? What you said?
I'm doing fine, how are you?
Two per year?
Yeah, more than two per year, two to three at the most. It depends on how fast it take, but it takes a while to restore. It's not, it's not a ten, twenty, thirty years, it takes a while.
Okay. I think it's something the city needs. We have nothing like this now. Must have stolen somebody's backyard. I'm not aware of any of the shop.
Not a restoring shop, not either.
Foxworth?
Yeah, not in the city limits, I'm not aware of any, yeah. And I'm not sure if it's his, anyway, that's another story, but it's not, that's not what we're looking on.
We're just, we're working on land use change. Anybody else have anything that'd like to say? You'll have to come, you'll have to come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. The name is Kathy Wilson. Uh, my concern is how will this benefit the community? And I understand what, uh, Mr. Simmons is trying to do. But how will it affect the residents who already live there? And my question is, am I hearing that it would be commercial only? Or commercial and residential?
No, he's asking for a commercial change, change to commercial.
Uh, and then too, I understand that the, uh, those who will do business there will be limited. But how will this look as far as the children are concerned? The various churches? Uh, I think, and I don't, I don't wanna go off the back, we were looking for something a bit more aesthetic for Church Street at Church Ave. Wondering too, if there are plans already in place for how Church Avenue should or would look. I have nothing against what Mr. Simmons is trying to do, but I'm looking more for Chipling, especially Church Ave, because it has a long history to be more pleasing to ancestors and, and, and people like my father, Price Wilson. So I am very concerned and I applaud him. I get here outside of the city limits, you know? So, hm, I'm really concerned, very concerned, very, very, very concerned. And I own land on Church Street. My father had a business for over fifty years on, we called it Church Street, but Church Ave. So I, I wanna know that that street looks good, that it's landscaped, that Ms. Jet and the rest of us can walk up and down that street with no problem, not saying Mr. Simmons wouldn't do that. But I'm looking for, like Ms. Hayes said over the phone, I'm looking for beautification. I'm looking for good-looking Church Ave. I don't wanna see no cars and stuff run up and down that road. I'm sorry, that's just me. And forgive me.
From what, from what we can see in what's been presented this, he's gonna put up a nice-looking building. And, uh, it's not gonna match the older homes that's on Church Street or Church Avenue.
And what's gonna happen to those homes?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a building. It, it should be a nice building.
That's what I'm screening, is what he's proposing.
Yeah, there you go.
I tell you what, I was thinking something more in the line of an auto zone or a Church Ave, that's a history. It's two minutes, you're on.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is not a historical building, for sure.
Thank you.
So you, you, you stated that, uh, how is it gonna benefit the community? I have been an activist in the community with the kids. And what I have found out is the kids today need some kind of guidance. So with me, I will do programs in the summertime, teaching the kids how to do it. We have to bring the kids here and find, I, I have been back home now for three months and I ride the city, there's, there's nothing going on. The kids are not doing anything. I have my nephew with me and their mind is not on trade anymore. It's on video games and doing other things. And if I can give that trade back to some kids to help them where they don't know where they're going at, this can be a project to help the kids in the community. So I, I would say that's how I would give back to the kids. And I, I understand you're, you're, uh, not understanding that you don't think it might work, but I do think it'll work, that's the vision that I have. I know it's gonna work because I know who I am dealing with the kids in the community.
Um, I have another question. Is, is this something you would be doing during the daytime?
Yes.
Not at night, when they're burying their homes?
If it, sometimes, you know, it might linger over if you got something that need to be digged quickly, but that'd be a close off, uh, the doors would be closed and I'd be inside doing it. But it is a nine to five business and then that's it. No, it's not a hangout spot.
Okay, we have somebody else has a question?
My name is Reverend John Milligan of Truth and Prayer Church. That's also just down from the spot on Church Avenue. My question is that, once this is zoned commercial, if for some reason, and I pray you're successful and everything goes well, nothing untoward happens, if something would happen and he or his successors decide to sell that, as it being commercial, could a different business come in that might be untoward, totally untoward as?
Mrs., uh, uh...
Mrs. Wilson had a question about, uh, not so much about the beauty, uh, but I, I wonder, you know, are, are there gonna be restrictions as to what future commercial could come in as far as, I wouldn't hate for, like we got in Marianna, unfortunately, the, the numerous pot-selling stores.
Yeah.
And, or, you know, even another, a liquor store, even that would not be pleasing to me at least. But, um, that's what my question, once it's zoned commercial, is there gonna be restrictions as to what future?
If commercial, if commercial, if commercial.
And that means anyone could bring anything?
But let me add something. There's several more commercial, uh, places close to that?
Yes.
That could do the same thing?
Yes, and they're there, so we know that they're there. And in fact, they, you know, I understand that...
I know where you're coming from.
Yeah, that, you know, but none of those, uh, right now, we don't have that right. Of course, we might be back at the commission here again, if they would be sold and something cropped up in those spots that was detrimental, I think, to the community and to our lease system. Because to be confronted right across your way with something that's not policing. I don't, I believe what you're planning to do is, I, I give it points up, but I worry about the future. And unfortunately, I, I, you said they can't put any restrictions once it's made commercial, then that means any commercial, so that's my...
Yeah, we get asked that same question several times.
Every time.
I'm sorry, I'm due to all this, so...
I, I understand, we understand exactly where you're coming from.
Just curious, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Who is this?
Hi, Donna Austin again at, uh, one two three three and one two three five, uh, right next to his property. Um, a couple of concerns and I, I ditto the concerns that the other people are, are mentioning. And I hear him saying that this is gonna benefit the community, which I, I have no doubt that, uh, that's a skill set that would be good for, uh, people to learn. However, that's a small piece of property. I'm concerned about, uh, parking. I'm also concerned about chemicals and how, uh, will he be required to store those chemicals, dispose of those chemicals, uh, so that we're not causing some type of environmental hazard? Um, and I'm just going to say that as much as, as, because I'm a retired school counselor and education is very key to my heart, I think that training people to do skill sets are good. But I don't think Church Avenue, that's not a place for a car restoration. That's not what that, that street is to be. That's not where many of the residents that I've spoken with, that's not really what we're looking for Church Avenue to be. We're looking for that to be something that is beautification, educational, and something that's not gonna cause a lot of congestion or potentially become a, a hazard to the area. Um, and as much as I, I'm one who believe in entrepreneurship because I'm gonna build something on my property and mentioning that, I wanna ask if his property is zoned commercial, and I think I heard someone say "commercial only", how does that impact my property? Because I want my property to be zoned mixed use. How would that impact me?
Okay. We'll, we'll have to check mixed use and see what's allowed on mixed use. Tamara, can you tell us?
If anything, the only thing I would say that would, if anything was affected, even if it was mixed use, low-density, commercial, the only thing I would say would be taxes. Commercial property would probably be taxed higher. Mixed use, I would assume, but I don't know. But I meant...
Okay.
That's all I would know that would affect it. But her property right now is low-density.
Yep.
Same as this one, same as this one.
Yeah, well, if, if you went with a mixed use of building apartments and stuff like that in there, it's not gonna fit the aesthetics of what you're talking about either, so...
Good afternoon, my name is Laura Skid and I live on Church Avenue. I have two pieces of property there, but I don't think the one on Pearson Drive would be any concern. I live on the far end, but here's my concern, I would like to pose this question. Should something happen to our houses, our resident, self-fire or storm or something, and our house is demolished, can you rebuild? If this gonna be a commercial zone? Cause I knew that happened years ago when a young lady's house was burned on Church Street. They didn't let her build again, she had to go a new time by Johnson Temple and build. So I'm just wondering what it would cause if it be a commercial zone? If he has been a commercial zone?
If it would only be his property has commercial? If you're, just say your house burned or whatever, I don't know. It all, the person I tried was not able to rebuild. They have lot sizes that's been, uh, that you have to meet. And maybe the lot wasn't big enough to where she could build to meet the setbacks. I don't know what the reason was why the person cannot build, but that would happen with anybody.
It wouldn't change your, um, son and, uh, you'd still be the resident.
And then too, I was looking, just like Donna was on the phone, I was looking for something more appealing for Church Street. Cause you know Church Street has gone through a lot. It's a highway ninety as it is now. It's only one sidewalk that we can walk on. We, I'm afraid even walk to the park, I'm afraid even go to my mailbox. I have to get on my daughter's yard next door to me and go to my mailbox. And I'm thinking about all the traffic congestion that would be. You have bus stops on either end of the road. And I, and I love him, you know, I, I love him. This, this brother's my daughter's best friend, you know, I like him. But I'm just thinking, could it be another structure, maybe a house or something? Maybe you should come up with another plan, something for students or children to come in, like a little something in the afternoon. But I just don't think on Church Street, we need it cleaned up, number one. Church Street need to be cleaned up with y'all, with the city help. But I don't think it'd be a feasible idea for, for a shop, for what he's, what he's presenting here. I just would love to see something else he would come back to the table with. And, you know, so we all must be supportive of him for that. But I just don't, I just don't, I just don't think of a business of that sort on Church Street. Because we don't, the house, even, even the roads are not large enough. Those were narrow roads on Church Street. It really is. Where would they park? It's not enough parking space. I knew when my uncle had that little cafe on the corner, on Church Avenue, that they was parked all the way in front of a house. It doesn't accommodate a lot of cars. So that would be my concern. And the taxes too, that would be my concern. But I just, to me, I'm not saying yay, I'm not saying nay, but I... But I just, to me, I'm not saying yay, I'm not saying nay, but I just say, I don't think, to me personally, I would like to see another structure, something else go there, another idea, so I can be more supportive and helping him.
Yep.
I didn't say yay, I didn't say nay, but this is mine.
Okay, there, there's an designated parking in front of that area. He'll have to park on his property.
Well, either his park or Donna's park, uh, property. It's no park, it's no space. I used to live up on that street.
Yeah, but he would have, if he does a business there, he'll have to have parking on his property.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a. He's got a.
Regardless of what he's saying, he decided to do something to other, then what you're wanting, saying he wants to do, whatever you're wanting to do, he'll more likely still have to change the zoning. And that's all we're trying to do today, is change the zoning.
There'll be another meeting about the business.
Okay, if they, if they change the zone to what, commercial?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be commercial residential? How would that be?
No, it'd be regular commercial.
Commercial use?
It has to be commercial for him to do what he's wanting to do.
Yeah.
Well, how would you, how, how can you change that though? Yep, he's, be given permission to do that?
He's asking us to change it to commercial. Yes, ma'am.
And so if, if we say, if he does that, then other businesses can come there on that street, any other type?
Anything that's resident, low density or whatever, still has to come before us too.
I know that, but I'm saying.
And she's asking, Ms. Marvis, I think you're asking if it doesn't work out for him.
Yeah.
Then another business, but it's still commercial.
Yeah.
Like we had across from Miss Myers' house, the parcel that was approved, it's for, it's for, um.
Funeral.
Funeral.
I remember that.
Now they don't have it.
That's right. That's what I'm saying.
And they asked the same thing at that.
That's where I'm going, that's where she's going. Yeah, yeah. And it looks like I should spin it off.
Another lady up there.
Ms. Daniels?
Yep. Julia.
Yeah. So that's, that's my only concern.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I'd like to say, good afternoon. Um, I am Josephine Rollack Robinson Florida. And I've been here, I'll say, all my life, and I'm ninety-four now. So I have, and I have known this street, you know, for at least ninety years, okay? And I do know, and I do know Mr. Simmons, and I admire him, you know, for the business, okay? Um, that we need, but Church Street has been up there, street, okay, you understand what I mean, from, from west to east. And the city has, has all these plans, you know, for Chipley. But there are no plans for Church Street. I mean, you look at Church Street West, and then you look at Church Street East. And I know you all don't, cause you've been here a long time too. And it's a, it's a, it's a short street. Long time ago, when integration, then, and everybody had to walk Church Street when Rollack became a middle school. I know y'all remember that too. So the city up that street and put sidewalks there. You probably know that too, right? Yes. So that all children could have somewhere to walk to get to Rollack Middle School. It wasn't a concern before integration, okay? So we want to do the right thing for Mr. Simmons and also for everybody on, on, on Church Street. And people like me that's not on Church Street. I live on Artier Road, okay? And, but I am part of this community. And I've been a part of it so long, I'm not gonna give it up now, okay? Not gonna give it up. Now, now the city commissioners, you know, we have these, these plans, what we gonna do for Chipley, and we've started it, you all know that, right? All these plans. And we were to have plans for the city, not for a certain part of the city. And I haven't seen too many plans on Church Street and Martin Luther King. You know, we have, we have written grants, and we said we have, you know, grants for this and grant for that. We need the grants for the city of Chipley, not just a portion of it, or not for who lives on this street, okay? So, and I've been before the city, and I will still be coming before the city when I think something concerns me. And it's not just about, uh, Simmons, okay?
Okay.
So, and now, I just want y'all to do the right thing, okay? Now, I know if I was on that street and it was being, you know, changed, okay, for commercial, no, I wouldn't walk to commercial. You wouldn't either, okay? So let's be real and help from the Simmons side, okay? That's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else?
This is Donna Austin again, and I just wanna go on record because I heard someone, I think I heard someone say that if I wanted to put apartments there on my property or something that wouldn't be in line with what other people are talking about as it relates to Church Avenue. Uh, I've been sharing my plans with, uh, Tamara and, uh, CRA and the mayor and many other people in that community and people up and down that street for years, uh, to respect what it is that they, they want to see and what they don't want to see. I'm very passionate about Chipley. Chipley is my home, although I don't live there. I was born in Chipley. And, uh, my family has given me that property there, and it is my intentions to do something that is aesthetically pleasing and educationally sound and residential stability for the community. So I'm not gonna put something on my property that's going to look off-centered from what, uh, I know that first and foremost, I believe that, uh, Church Avenue should look like. I've been in many meetings with Ms. Rollack, uh, for years. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure I'm going on record to say that what I'm planning to put on my property is not something that will not be, uh, pleasing to Church Avenue. I'm making very good plans. I have a great planner. I have a great architect. They are drawing up plans. We're getting closer to being able to submit those plans for the community to look at them and approve them, cause we will not break ground if the people on Church Avenue does not believe in what we're doing. Because it is important to me that I have the people on that street and in that community. I need their support in order for this to be something that is worthwhile to sow into that community. I take what I'm doing very serious. This is not a hobby. This is not a game for me. Because people's lives are depending on us to do the right thing so that lives may be transformed respectfully. And so that's where I am, and I just wanted to make that clear, that I'm not getting ready to throw up some apartments on my property.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think people realize that, um, he even said he's only gonna be doing two or three cars at a time. He will have to re, meet requirements for commercial, including landscaping, fencing. It's not, you're not just gonna go out there and look and see this, a bunch of junk vehicles. It's not, it's not gonna be like that. That's when code enforcement comes in.
Correct.
So it's not gonna look like that.
Okay, one more, one more time, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you once again. Is there any way that we as citizens, uh, community people, laypeople, church people can see what is around the corner for Church Street? I know in some developments, you can go and look at what you, Church Street will be in the next year, five years, ten years. Is there any way that we can see that? How will Church Street look? What do we want it to look like?
I don't know if anybody's got their plans drawn up on Church Street or for Church Street.
The parcels are individually, and so. Right, so I meant, what are you gonna do with, in your property? That's what I'm saying, you can't.
Nobody knows.
Because everybody's different, and they're not a developer.
I'd like to know what it is as a group, as a body, so that people like me who own property, sisters and brothers who own property, what is a community that you want? How do you want this street to look? That's what I'm saying. I, I think when I came in the, uh, when this building was being built, you could walk, was it the library or wherever, and see what you were expecting to put up. Is there some way that can be done for, for, for Chipley? I know, uh, for Church Avenue, I know I buy into it.
Well, you, you might, you might come back to the city council and see if they will draw up some type of future plan.
Okay.
But that's what you'll have to do there, uh, and, and they might have an idea of what it's gonna be five years from now, but we don't know that.
I see.
Really, it would be according to each property owner, what they have in mind, like yours and anybody.
On that committee, as a matter of fact, a, and I'm probably out of line, I'm sorry if I am.
No, you're fine.
But if, if there was a committee, and, and we got together, like Ms. Jack who lives here, Ms. Robinson, who's affiliated with, uh, TJ Rollack High, uh, and get together and say, this is the way we want Church Street to look.
Well.
But you still have to get each property owner.
Sister, let me at it, and I believe I can work it.
Yeah, you need to come back to city council and talk to them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My question is to the, the lady that's on the phone. Uh, she's saying, uh, what she's going to do with her property, but also, and she's trying to do commercial too?
She said mixed use. She'll have to change her.
She got to change hers.
She's trying to change hers to mixed use.
So she's trying to say no to my business with investment, and, and it's her business, it's even better. It's just, okay, I, I get where they're coming from with what they want to look like, but I've been living here in Chipley now for like thirty-some years, and there's no change when on that street. And if, if it's gonna be changed, you know, we, I've been hearing this now since I moved back here in sixteen, that we was gonna make a change on Church Avenue, and there ain't been the change yet. So the change don't come from, you know, us coming up fighting. We have to get together and make this change. We sitting here trying to find out, I don't want this, and I don't want this. We need to come together as a group down there. Oh, excuse me, say, this is what's gonna make this even better, but we're not doing this now. We're, 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 we're doing this where, no, this is good, mine is better. That's not the way this supposed to go. So what I'm just trying to get at, who say that I might put up this shop? I might get with you guys and do something else. So that, I am open for anything. But if I have a property on a spot that's not getting used, because guess what? If I opened up this shop, it's not vacant anymore. It's bringing in money to the city. That is helping the city with more taxes, and that's what we have to look at. In order to get new and better things in the city, more things have to open up for, that can get taxes to be a more thing for the city. So if it's going on, we bickering and fighting amongst each other, it's never gonna happen, and it's never gonna grow. We got, and I, and I don't, I don't mean to offend a lot of you. I'm at my mid-age. I'm forty. Some of you guys are in your age.
That's good.
And so now we have to get to some of the younger people and what they want too. We can tell what we want, but what do the kids want? What they need? We got, we got to understand the differences in time, and I'm still trying to learn the young ones. And it's hard to learn them because I'm, I'm still learning myself at forty years old, forty-seven years old. So we have to come together. We, we sitting saying yay or nay about what's going on. We, this might be different, so I'm not gonna talk, that's just my question.
Uh, wait.
In the face of age, I know where he's coming from. Yeah, but we were there first. Yeah, we was on Church Street first, and I think we should have some prerogative of what we want to leave for our children. No defense. Age coming from beauty, okay? That's what they always told me.
Well.
All right.
Some of us, some of us are looking pretty good too.
That's right, that's right. But what I'm going to say about this, I think it's, we were, we was there first. And I think we have the right to say what we want and what we don't want. Sure as come something come behind. I got a little red baby, older than I am, he's just three years, three years old. And I know who I'm leaving my property to. They gonna have a say in it, and they gonna be younger than him. And they gonna be up here saying the same thing about him.
Thing about it is, you, you have the right to do what you want to do to your property, but the other people do too.
I know him, but what I'm trying to say, I just say, and I still say, I do not believe, no defense, that's a beautiful building. I could put a lot of stuff in there. That's a beautiful building. But I think before anything should happen on Church Street, I think the city should help us beautify Church Street for any structure go there. And you, you, you all, you backing forth every day, getting people even like to nod your hands on their own street. Here she gone, here she gone.
But they have, they have the CRA, I tell people.
Well, I'm gonna say, you know how you are, yeah, yeah, I know you're not.
That's grants that they can bet, y'all can.
Yeah, yeah, they just took, they destroyed building, they just tore a building down on Cooper Drive that they was harassing. He's gone on like they had to tear it down. I have, this is a house across the street where I live. It belonged to my cousin in Co, Tacoma, Washington. I can't do anything with it, but I do try to keep it mold. I keep mine and my daughter's. I'm doing the best I can. Every time I put sand in my yard, the ditch right by my yard, when it flood, it gets in my yard. They go, even, even now, I'm suffering Michael. When Michael came, two or three trees fell in the road. So your third fell was through my yard.
Okay.
And it's ditches and trenches down there. They promised to put sand there, they never did.
Uh, ma'am, we got, we gotta move forward.
Yeah, that's right. So, yeah, so it, 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 it's.
It don't matter how this book goes today. It don't matter how this book goes today. Y'all gonna have to pin on Mr. Simmons do the right thing when it comes time.
If you're gonna have to change land use, if you're gonna wanna build any type of, um, business, any.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So I meant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I've got one thing that just keeps going through my mind, and this is part of planning. It's not really zoning. But my mother taught at Rollack Middle School. And I know that building. And I think we should do something to help kids more there. The enrichment center, I think, is what it's called. We need to get with the county. We need to get with, with, with the folks to work there more and develop that more and help the children, teach them mechanics and stuff like that in one of those rooms. And, and get grants to fix that place up, cause it's just, it's rotting. And it, and that kind of thing, it's got plenty of parking, all the things they've talked about being issues with your location, it's all right there. Just throwing that out there.
There's some people working on that part of it now. I talked to Mr. Blunt about that.
Yes, there is, they are working on, yeah.
Well, whatever the city can do to help, that's what we need to do.
Okay.
I know it's not our responsibility.
It's not city though, that's county, isn't it?
No, that's, that's not the city property.
Right, it's not. Oh, it's individual?
Yes.
I thought it was the counties or something. Is it Ms. Sheffield? Is it Miss, um, Sheffield?
Well, that's somebody.
Anyway, that's another story.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's another story.
We're not on that today. Yeah, we're not on that today. But I do hope they do something with it, yes.
The main thing is, right now the property's low density. The only thing you can do is basically build a house on it. If, if anybody wants to see any type of growth through Church App, uh, Church Street, they're typically, they're gonna have to change it to a different zoning to do a business. Otherwise, there'll just be houses there.
Okay, that's good. We're fixing, we're fixing to take that. I need a motion. Do they approve or disapprove? One of them?
I make a motion that we approve it, um, just the land change to commercial, and then, um, come back at a later date about the building. But you'll have restrictions on it.
Do we have second?
That building's not in any corridor or anything, so that would be an in-house. It'd go through our planning and fir, planning firm, and in-house. It will not come back through.
Oh, it won't come back through it, but they'll have the rules and stuff.
Unless there's some type of a variance, but yes, he would have to, or whoever would have to go by whatever the requirements that the city has to build. Landscaping, stormwater. I don't want that they understand that. What she's saying is, once it's a pretty commercial today, he won't have to come back before this board.
But the city council.
If it approves, city council.
If they approve it today.
But it still goes to the city. We're not the final thing.
Today, it goes through planning and zoning for the land change, where the property located at? Where is our planning and zoning in city council, it is a requirement to get it changed. But if we decide to do a development, whatever development you want, that is not a requirement that would need to go through planning and zoning and through city council. If it changes. But then you through the, even if it was low density, whatever, whatever it is, if he decides to still build a house, it would not concern this committee, it would not.
If it needs to be, this is not commercial.
I know, but even if it's commercial, it will not, it's, we have. What she's saying is, if they approve it, if council approves it, he doesn't have to come back and report to board.
Cause it goes to a higher source.
Because he's changing the zoning, and that's what our code states, when our code is a requirement. If you want to change your, 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 and our, the city code, it requires you to go through planning and zoning and city council, and that's what we're doing, just to switch the zoning.
I have a clarification. My name is Sherri Robinson. I just actually moved here like, what, three days ago. Uh, but I'm one, one raised here at Chipley. I think there's a clarification that they're not understanding. When you say that the area is gonna be rezoned for commercial, and that's what you decided to do today.
Right.
Is, that makes the entire area.
No.
Just a lot.
Property that he had, just his lot. So then, in another year, someone wants to down the street, then they want to, they have to come back through this.
That's right.
Process for each particular piece of property, correct?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, so it's not the whole area, it's just one, just his property only would be commercial, and not the entire street, uh,
But there is other commercial pieces on that street already.
There are some already.
Yeah, several.
One has to go through that process.
They probably run by the man.
Right there, and that had a house on it, right there, uh, they don't pay right there. You have a church that's actually located, there's two groups down there, the TJ, TJ Rollack.
Yeah, there's three, your four right there on it.
Sherri, when does the, uh, city council meet?
September, that, that's.
That, that's, okay.
You got to finish the.
Ma'am, yeah, let me, let me say one thing. It don't matter what we do here today. If we vote yes or no, it's still got to go to the city council to get approved. Now, they meet on the ninth. If y'all wanna get together and, and put something together and talk to city council about this, you're free, you got plenty of time. But what?
No. No, no, this was not a waste of time. This is the best meeting we ever had, Taya Church.
It is.
Well, what you, that's what I'm saying, you know, we can't give the final answer here. We, we're making a motion, or we have a motion and a second to approve, and we're fixing to vote on it, but it's not gonna be any good until city council passes this. And, and they, they gonna meet on the ninth of September next month. So y'all got plenty of time to talk to your city council members, or whatever you wanna do. Okay? A motion second? All in favor? Motion po, approved. Anybody against?
I'm against.
Okay. You got a three-one vote, it's approved.
Three rest.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Is there any other business? Any other business?
Yeah. We have any other business to come forward? Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.